Okay, welcome everybody. We're going to get started this evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the City Council. Today is Monday, July 10th. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yance Galati is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. There are four of us here this evening. Thank you. We met in closed session prior to this meeting, and I'll invite the city attorney to report out.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So, welcome. This is a hybrid meeting, so we will take public comment from both the chamber as well as virtually. I often start with opening remarks, but being that it's a special meeting, we're going to get right to our agenda, and I'll turn it to the city clerk to address how public comment can be managed.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, where members of the public can provide comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171, and use the meeting ID 844-3204-9611, and they can press *9 to raise their hand for comment. And you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though you're not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell that you live in, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. We are offering closed captioning for this meeting tonight, so you could select "Live Transcript" button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. The first item is our consent agenda. Are there any items to be helped on the consent agenda? I'm looking at my colleagues, not seeing any. I will open public comment. So, this is on the consent calendar only, which has four items, A through D. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone? Is there anyone online?
I do see one hand. Tylee, we're ready for you.
Sorry, wrong, wrong thing I was raising my hand for. I thought it was to speak in the open mic time.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment. Request a motion on the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries, I guess, 4-0 with Vice Mayor being absent. Tonight, we have our single agenda item is an ordinance regulating camping on public property. And I see that we have Director Chris Hess here with us, and I will turn it over to you. Welcome. Is your mic on, or is it maybe put a little bit closer to you? There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members, and all of the public that is tuning in tonight. We are here at a special meeting tonight to discuss an ordinance regulating camping on public property by people experiencing homelessness. I'm going to be joined tonight by Assistant City Attorney Genevieve Coyle, by Lieutenant Carl Huber, Police Chief Spiller, and other staff members that will help to answer different questions that you have of our different parts of the organization. So, we're doing the special meeting to introduce this ordinance. If the council goes forward with it, then we will discuss it again the next week and have a vote on it. The reason for this special meeting is that there's been intense public interest. And as all of the council members know, and my office knows, we've been receiving a lot of complaints about camping on public property, particularly in regards to the Mahone Creek Path, which is a two-block-long path that runs near BioMarin and Sprouts along Lincoln and Anderson. So, I want to begin by grounding the conversation here. Regulating camping is not the city's response to homelessness. We respond to homelessness with permanent supportive housing. That is how we plan to end homelessness in Centerfell. And the city has made substantial investments, millions of dollars, going into programs that are saving lives, that have succeeded in ending homelessness for hundreds of people in our city, including many encampment residents. I'm not going to read this slide, but these are all of the different efforts that the city has put forth, and I know that the council is very familiar with them. However, unfortunately, we do continue to have the reality of people experiencing homelessness, camping on public property, and not having a place to go. The current situation at the Mahone Creek Path is that there are about 30 to 33 campsites. It started at about 10 in April, 15 in May, about 25 in June, and now we're at the level that we're at. These campsites are oriented all along the path, oftentimes with a lot of trash and refuse in between the campsites, with those abandoned items being difficult to attribute to any particular campsite. And additionally, the campsites are oriented in a group, in one section, to have a type of courtyard and common area between them, which was actually where there was recently a methamphetamine bust and a dealer and trafficker was removed from the camp in that section. We've received all manner of complaints and have had the police and our SAFE team, which is our alternative response team that responds to psychiatric and drug-related emergencies, down at the Mahone Path almost every day this month. And that has accompanied a lot of increased complaints from the community. Folks are very concerned about safety of youth walking to school, of people who are working at businesses down there, having bad interactions with the campers, and just the general environment around the drug arrest and the increase of people that are coming in and placing their campsite wherever. Our response so far has been what we typically use in order to address homelessness humanely as possible, which is the daily and proactive police response. Our mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, who goes down most days of the week and offers referrals and information to folks. We have our SAFE team, as I mentioned. Our Department of Public Works team has been doing weekly trash pickups, which have been pretty successful. Those are items voluntarily surrendered by the campers, not items taken away from them. We've increased our downtown streets team presence in encampments recently, which offers cleanup and case management. And our excellent partner, the St. Vincent de Paul Society, continues to do case management that is funded by the city through our Encampment Resolution Fund grant. Unfortunately, we continue to have problems, and the primary problems we want to try to solve with the ordinance tonight are this. First of all, we have to allow sufficient space on public property for people who have no place to sleep to have a place to sleep. This is the case that everyone's heard about, Martin versus Boise, and we are not going to be proposing a camping ban tonight because cities are not allowed to do so by federal court rulings. However, cities can regulate camping. We don't have to allow it wherever folks want to camp. And what we want to try to accomplish is greater safety on city property by deconcentrating some of these larger encampments, being able to respond more quickly, and reduce the size of the camping areas so that trash and waste does not continue to spill over all across our public lands. So, our new proposed code on camping would be Chapter 19.50. So, beginning, camping is prohibited by most people. Folks that are experiencing homelessness are accepted from this. Folks that have a place to go or have shelter are not allowed to camp in the city on public property. This is the Martin versus Boise compliance statement, and we have a compliant ordinance. We want to reorganize some existing prohibitions that we have on camping into the camping ordinance. They're pulled from different sections currently. That is that there's no camping at the city open spaces, parking garages, public facilities, Albert and Boyd Parks. Folks cannot camp on public right-ofways and sidewalks, and there's no blocking access to public facilities. None of this is new. It's all addressed in our current ordinances. We're just collecting it together. So now, where it becomes new restrictions. We're going to restrict camping within 100 feet of playgrounds, within 10 feet of public utility infrastructure. So, in this, I really want people to think like, you know, utility PG&E boxes and such. We are planning to add the part that is underlined in the slide here in regards to the city manager's potential responsibilities, which is the city manager may prohibit camping, that's already the case, and we would add, or adopt, time, place, or manner conditions on camping on one or more public properties at any time due to the threat to public health, safety, or welfare. What we're trying to do here is that the current code really makes it a bit all or nothing, prohibit or allow. We want to have particular conditions possible for particular properties so that we can respond more quickly. Next, where camping is accepted, we have new time, place, and manner conditions. The camping area cannot exceed 10 feet by 10 feet for one person, or for multiple people, 10 feet by 20 feet, two or more persons regardless of the overall number. All items must be kept or stored within the maximum permitted camping area. And no camping area may be established within 200 feet of any other camping area. So, what we're doing is limiting the overall amount of space that a campsite can take and requiring that it be at least 200 feet from other campsites. We want to also recommend an edit that came up, which is a conflict provision saying that if there's any conflict with other regulations in the city code, that this ordinance would prevail. So, our rationale for doing this is that we're trying to deconcentrate the camping that exists right now. We hope that this will reduce the potential for criminal activity, the trash, the impact on businesses. We want to create some buffer zones around the infrastructure, particularly the utility boxes, both for the safety of individuals camping and for the access of the workers that are trying to make sure that our utilities keep working and running. And finally, buffer zones around the playgrounds are trying to provide more safety for families. If the ordinance is adopted, we will be doing a widespread outreach and education strategy to ensure that individuals experiencing homelessness and potentially displaced will be aware of how to follow the new ordinance. We do that through our Marin Alliance Solving Homelessness, which is all of our social services partners. We have our mental health liaison and SAFE that I've already referred to, all out there doing outreach in the community and talking to people who may be in violation of the new ordinance about what it is before they're receiving notice that they need to leave. Our practice, whenever people are being displaced, is to provide a 72-hour notice at minimum of that displacement, and to continue checking in with folks, particularly at about the 24-hour mark. Additionally, if folks are being displaced, we want to continue our offer that we've made at prior encampments, that we will store items for 90 days at the city's expense at a trailer that the city rents. So, with that, that's actually something else with that. I want to open up for questions and comments from the public and from the council, and really appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, Director Hess. We'll start with questions from the council. Can you find that? Councilmember Bushy.
Thank you. Has this deconcentration proposal ever been implemented anywhere else?
That's a great question. Thank you. We have based our ordinance very loosely on some other cities, such as Elk Grove, California, which had a bit of a different approach in terms of limiting the number of individuals. I think with this, we are in somewhat uncharted territory. We believe that we are not doing a camping ban, which would be in violation of Martin versus Boise, but trying to address the particular issues that we see here.
Okay. Next question. How on earth are we going to enforce this? And I'd like to hear the nuts and bolts.
Definitely. I think in that case, I'd like to ask one of my colleagues from the police department to come up.
Doesn't sound like it's on yet. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yep.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Carl Huber. I'm a lieutenant with the police department, and I'm honored to be able to speak before you today. To answer the question regarding enforcement, a good portion of the enforcement would be conducted by our Special Operations Unit. Part of the education piece would be to provide a kind of a framework for those experiencing homelessness to, you know, as part of our education campaign, to show them distance and the amount of space that would be allowed for a specific encampment. They would also be the ones that would provide the notice to the individuals if they are within violation of the ordinance and do the enforcement effort. It's similar to what they're doing already with regards to encampments, but this is a strategy to kind of decentralize or deconcentrate those encampments.
Just a follow-up question. You say special operations. Are you referring to the SAFE team, or is there some other?
That would be our Open Space Ranger Unit and also our Downtown Footbeat Unit.
Okay. And what is the plan if someone, fully educated and has experienced all that you have to offer, nevertheless persists in noncompliance?
We would provide them a 72-hour notice like we normally do as our current practice, and provide them with that 72 hours to move their encampment. If they choose not to do so, we will remove the encampment and store their personal property for the 90-day period, or until they come to pick it up.
And how are you going to decide which one? Because it sort of takes two to be in violation. So, which one gets to stay and which one has to go?
And that's a very good question. That's one of the things that we discussed at length. It's like, it would be giving notice to both, so to give them the option to choose which one would move. And then, if they both don't move, then they're both in violation. We would remove their encampments and store that property for them to retrieve at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. I'll go this way. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you, and thank you, Director, for providing the update. Can you go back through again? Are we removing any resources? Based on this change, the current setup of resources, I'm not sure who I'm directing this question to. Is anything changing, or are we adding any additional services or resources?
Definitely. I appreciate the question. I think that the addition of certain types of resources is something that we do more administratively and not through a camping ordinance. I know that there is a lot of interest in particular things like cleanups and bathrooms, and those have all been really handled outside between the agencies, within the budget, within kind of our collaborations that work with individuals experiencing homelessness.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, we had a study session, now feels months and months ago, I don't remember exactly when, around our interim shelter conversation. And I was wondering if you have an update of where we are with that.
Yeah, definitely. There's some really actually productive and great conversations going on behind the scenes because those different proposals may involve properties that may or may not happen, contractors that may or may not happen. I would not really want to, you know, talk about that, exactly who those folks are publicly. But we are very interested and making progress on coming up with the development and operations of this type of non-congregate shelter, also known as the tiny homes village to many folks, looking at different places where it could go in the city and determining how we would come up with the money.
Right. I mean, that was one thing that came through that study session, was that it's a very expensive piece, not only just to establish the shelter area, but the resources that are needed to maintain it.
I agree completely, and I think that the operating costs of this is a real challenge, but one that we're working hard on.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Some of my questions were already asked. I have a couple more. In the staff report, there is mention of parking lot, and I'll read the section from the proposed ordinance, 19.50.030A.3. It reads, "Public facilities, no person or person shall camp in or on any public facility or portion thereof, including the parking lot of any such area, or in a manner that obstructs, blocks, or otherwise interferes with access to a public facility or private property." Can you elaborate on how we approach the term parking lot in this context?
Definitely. Assistant City Director, or City Attorney Coyle can answer that one.
Hi, Genevieve Coyle, Assistant City Attorney. So, this provision that you just read, Councilmember Hill, is a carryover from our existing ordinance. Our existing ordinance has this provision in it already. And camping in public facilities is absolutely prohibited. And a public facility is defined as a building or a fenced area that is, you know, used by the city for, you know, business and governmental purposes. And then, there is this additional provision that reads that, or in any parking lot of the public facility. That is referring to the actual parking spaces themselves. So, we're not talking about, for example, if we just use City Hall as an example, we're not talking about areas that are adjacent to the lot or adjacent to the buildings, but certainly the parking spaces themselves and the right-of-way where the vehicles move in or about is what we're referring to by the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. And actually, this is more of a question that maybe may go beyond the coordination with Centerfell Police Department. There are so many, in the continuum of care, stakeholders involved here, including SRPD, SAFE, but also nonprofits like Ritter and St. Vincent County. What are the roles of the other stakeholders here in the continuum of care as we move forward with, if we were to move forward with this ordinance?
Definitely. Thank you for that question. It's interesting, the three that you mentioned, St. Vincent's, Ritter, and the county, have all definitely been consulted specifically on this. Maybe they didn't agree with everything. I don't want to put words into their mouth at all on that, but their feedback was incorporated into the design of this process and this ordinance. We meet every week as a continuum, and individuals, all the way from the CEOs of those organizations and the policymakers at the county, to the individual case managers and outreach workers, participate in that. I probably participate in 2/3 of them. Lynn Murphy participates in 100% of them. And we're very involved as a partner in trying to educate folks about what's going on and collect the feedback. That group received two different presents. about what's going on and collect the feedback. That group received two different presentations from me on this matter in order to try to gain as much information and sensitivity and collaboration as what the city can get under these types of circumstances. I think that we have an unusually cooperative and collaborative continuum here. I've really appreciated it, and I think that, similar to the case with the closure of Albert Park, that we would find a really great collaboration with the agencies and hopefully a very smooth process in enforcing this the way that we had at Albert Park.
Great. I have a, thank you. I have two more questions. I have awareness of all the projects that have come online that are producing permanent supportive care and temporary shelter units. You know, some ones that I've looked forward to are, of course, 3301 Kerner. My, the date that I have in my recollection is early 2025, which is still a year and a half away. We're also aware of the South Elysio Project, which although is not in San Rafael, will still produce available units, hopefully for folks that can gain vouchers for it. When is that coming online? And are there any other projects that would be able to provide either temporary or permanent supportive housing in the near future?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for that question. The, yeah, the Elysio Project is supposed to be coming online. I've heard September or October. We're starting to do, we as a continuum, not the city, are starting to do the outreach and tenant qualification process now because it takes a long time to get folks through that often. So we, we will be seeing that. You're correct that the current date projected for the Kerner project is about a year and a half away. So that will make a big dent in homelessness in Marin County, but not for a while. Additionally, Homeward Bound is undergoing construction on their site, which also will take time because it's new construction in this case, but will make a very big dent. The biggest way that we help people resolve homelessness in the county is by placing them in individual apartments with housing vouchers. And that has been a very slow process this year in particular, because over the last few years, we enjoyed a lot of vouchers that came forth, some of them with funding because of the pandemic. And right now, we don't have, we don't have that that type of resource. As vouchers turn over, which is unusual, people are being housed for sure. Through our encampment resolution fund program, we've housed four people just in the last quarter. That was a little bit of luck because of vouchers coming available and those folks coming to the top of the list. And I really want to note for the community too, that it's the cooperation with private landlords that is essential to solving homelessness in this case. We have about 600 individuals placed in with private landlords like that, whereas our projects that we develop extremely important, but represent a smaller portion of the overall permanent supportive housing available.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is with respect to, and I had to write down quickly because you had said around the city manager as the opportunity to adopt time, place, or manner. And I wanted to understand how that intersects with, and it's difficult because there are many, I would, I would end up sitting here suggesting counterfactual scenarios, but you know, I'd like some comment on different scenarios that that would apply to, because I want to understand what that would look like. So I'd like to propose it in an open ended way to the city manager or whoever could describe what that would mean.
I would like to call on my colleagues to answer that question.
I'm happy to start with this one. So time, place, and manner restrictions on camping ordinances are very normal and typical for municipalities to adopt. The best example is the time, place, and manner restrictions that we're actually proposing in this ordinance for all of the the properties that are not on our absolute prohibition list, and that includes the size of a campsite and the distance to somebody else's, to the next campsite over. So that's just an example. So if we were going to, so the reason we were, we're proposing to add the additional authority to adopt time, place, and manner restrictions at a particular property is to be able to deal with unique circumstances at properties that we may not be able to cover when we're talking about a citywide regulation. Because as you know, every property is going to be different. It's going to be different sized. It's in a different geographical area. There might be different, you know, sensitive receptors or different neighborhoods around that parcel. So what we have in our existing ordinance now is the ability to absolutely prohibit camping on particular properties, and the council and city manager have already done that in a couple of circumstances. That's Boyd Park and Albert Park. But it may be in the future that if there's another unique property where we're seeing particular problems, we may not want to, or you may not want to prohibit it altogether, but you might want to put some reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to limit the impacts. So it could be the number of campsites at that location. It could be hours of the day. Some municipalities are starting to do daytime camping prohibitions. We are not prepared to propose that right now because they're very, very new, and they really haven't kind of undergone some constitutional scrutiny. But in like a unique situation, maybe, you know, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but near a school where there's children playing nearby, it might be something where you'd want like a specific limitation like that. So that would be like a time restriction. So there would be things of that nature to kind of just dampen or mitigate the impacts at a particular location.
So to clarify, it vests this authority in the city manager to make this determination?
It does, just like the existing ordinance, which also allows the city manager to absolutely prohibit it. But historically, we haven't used that. We've gone to city council, you know, anyway. So we've got that, you know, flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All of my questions have been answered except for one, and it's really building on what Councilmember Hill was driving out in terms of the housing piece. Homelessness is resolved from housing as well as supportive services. And could you speak to the case management dollars that the city is putting in, and will those continue? And how are those? How do those show up literally on our streets, the case managers that we're funding?
Definitely. Appreciate that question. St. Vincent de Paul is the primary contractor that the city has. We have been fortunate to receive now two grants that are one-time grants from the state of California to resolve encampments. And we've used both of those grants on case management with St. Vincent de Paul. It has been a very successful program. We are very proud of it. The original group, there was a cohort of 17 that were being case managed, I'm sorry. There was a cohort of 19 that were being case managed under the first grant, and 14 of those individuals have been housed. Additionally, we've also housed people through other case management partners that we don't pay directly. And I would really want to, you know, couldn't, couldn't praise them enough. But we have, you know, Homeward Bound, we have the Downtown Streets Team, the Ritter Center, Buckaloo Programs, the Center for Domestic Peace, and many others. And I'm really sorry to any partners that I leave out just because I'm not thinking of them at the moment. With the, the service support area, we housed 31 of the 46 individuals that were, that were staying there as a result of the case management efforts of those agencies, and the city did not raise the money or pay for those services. Does that get at the question?
It does. And just to further clarify, so what is it when you say that, is the case managers, are they visiting folks in the encampments? Can you just kind of?
Yeah, how does it show up on our streets? That was the part. Definitely. Case managers are absolutely going into encampments. They're building relationships with people. They do that over the process of oftentimes many months, trying to get individuals who are not prone to trust to trust them, to work together with them for things like getting an ID that is necessary to get into housing, but many individuals have lost during the process of homelessness. Potentially cleaning up tickets or old credit issues that may be prohibiting individuals from getting into housing, many other things. Every case is unusual. A lot of times, case managers will develop relationships with individuals in the encampment and then begin to meet with them outside so they can do so more privately. And, you know, really get into all of the different types of issues, including mental health, including other types of issues that might, might be barriers to housing for an individual.
So then just the last part, the SAFE program, the specialized assistance for everyone, how does that integrate with what you just described?
Right. We are seeing the SAFE team out on the streets on a regular basis. One project that I am working on and have not completed is a data sharing agreement. We do see that there's definitely some openness at the county to some type of information sharing. I should say information rather than data sharing, just so that when the SAFE team is responding to an individual in crisis, that they know who is the case manager that might be a person who could help get the person through the crisis in conjunction with the SAFE team.
Right. And just to clarify that any member of the public can call that phone number and a SAFE team will respond to whatever is unfolding on the streets versus a uniformed police officer, if that's the appropriate response. Is that correct?
That is absolutely right. Yes.
Just because there's a lot of other parts of the support system. I think that's what the council is trying to understand as we consider this ordinance change. Okay, there, oh, one more question? Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Kurtz.
So in a couple of the correspondences that we've received, there was a sort of the question of, are we fixing a problem or creating new problem by the dispersment? And does that mean in terms of, you know, resource access, cleanups, everything else? What are your thoughts in terms of, are we solving or creating problems?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and I think it is very fair to say that there will be consequences that we cannot foresee right now when we cause people to disperse more than they're currently dispersed. We do believe from experience that depending on the individuals that are camping, that small groups of individuals do not generate the kinds of issues that come to the city and that come to the police department that very large encampments have been generating. And so we believe that this will be a better condition, but I am not here promising the council or the public that we will be ending complaints about homelessness or that all behaviors that are bothering the public right now will be going away. It is still very tough work to work with individuals that are out camping and have no alternative. That's going to continue. But we do want to be able to respond to the encampment getting out of hand, growing rapidly, becoming an attractive place for the trafficking, which is what we see happening now.
Thank you. Appreciate the dose of reality. Okay, thank you. I'm sure there might be other questions that come up, so we'll open, I will open the public comment. And so this is your opportunity. If you're in the chambers, you'll have two minutes. And as the city clerk stated, you can come down if you want to. You can share your name and tell what part of San Rafael that you live in, and we welcome you. So come on down if you'd like to speak.
Is this on?
Let it up to him here. There you go.
Is that good?
Yep.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, councilmembers. I appreciate it. Two questions. I'll be quick. First, you mentioned your presentation, the comparison to Elk Grove. With all due respect, this is in two hours away in Sacramento. Can you help us understand what this ordinance would do from a benchmarking standpoint to our neighbors in Larkspur, Corder Maderos, San Anselmo, things like, I know it's a different municipality structure, but can you help us understand what this ordinance would do relative to our neighbors? Because it seems like we have a larger challenge, if you will, than they do. And then separately, you touched upon it a moment ago with no promises, which I understand and respect, but any impact study or thoughts? I can't imagine, I could be wrong, but I can't imagine this is going to increase crime. Can you help us understand the benefits and whether the, San Rafael Police want to comment, what the potential benefits on a reduction in crime this would have? Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And so what we'll do is collect all the questions, and then we'll turn it over to staff after all the public comment. So thank you. Anyone else like to provide public comment on this item in the chambers? Now is your time. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Mark Millier, and I've been a resident of the city of San Rafael for 10 years, moving to Marin County in 1987. The current situation is a rampant homeless community degrading the life and experiences of the people of the city of San Rafael. This has negatively affected the experience of the people of the city of San Rafael, so much so that the business climate and tax base has been significantly reduced, evidenced by the multitude of empty storefronts on Forest Street. It has also affected my family's quality of life on a daily basis. The urban blight is a challenge to the city of San Rafael, the businesses in the city, and the homeowners. I come here as a homeowner that has been dealing with this homeless issue on a very regular basis. By very regular, I mean weekly. This is a horrible issue that my family constantly has to deal with. I live right behind the Fall Creek Center. It's a two minute walk. You walk out these doors right here and you see tents. It's horrible for my family to see that every single day. While I can empathize with some of those homeless folks, it's a problem. My calls to the San Rafael Police Department over the last eight years range from general reporting of homeless people to camping, to open drug dealing, to loud arguments at all hours of the night. There's excessive trash and a potential health threat with people relieving themselves wherever they please. In addition to that, there have been two major recordable fire incidents in the last eight years. One were multiple multi-acre fires one evening, and another one requiring large response from CAL FIRE, including air assets. That's a major hazard for me, for other residents here in the city. It's a problem. I don't know that the issues that are coming are going to fix it. I don't know there's an immediate solution for this. I don't know that the current ordinance is enough. It has to be extended to 100 feet of any residential home and business and limit homeless camping 40 hours or less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else like to approach the council on this item? Okay.
My name is Matt Butler. I've been providing showers and bathrooms to homeless people for over 20 years at my business, the San Rafael Yacht Harbor, not by choice, but because the doors just get kicked down and people need water and bathrooms. I believe you got an exercise in futility here on your hands this evening. California's homeless problems are rooted in 150 years of classist, elitist, bigoted, racist policy that is hammered and hard boiled into our building restrictions in this state. Every community, the citizens of every community who own houses get to determine whether or not anybody else builds a house in their town. And it has constricted and limited the supply of housing and created the mess we are in. And you are going to have to have the hard job of telling folks that the housing, the housing crisis isn't going away. The homeless crisis isn't going away until we build some housing and let individuals build housing, because you need to make a distinction between government-built housing, which could become tenements or projects or disasters, or allowing individuals to build their own housing. Again, this problem was 150 years in the making, and you're not going to solve it by chasing the symptoms of it here, which is people living in parks. Nobody's camping. I went camping over the Fourth of July, and there's a big difference between camping and living. Stop calling it camping.
Thank you for your comments, Matt. Good. Do you want to start? Yeah, with the microphone. Thank you, Jason. No, no worries.
Okay. Let me get set up here. Okay. In the staff report, I noticed the city acknowledged that there are virtually no shelter beds available in all of Marin County. And because of that fact, the city is now going to allow camping on certain public property if this ordinance passes. The admission of this fact is important, and I'm glad the city is now publicly letting the San Rafael community know how very difficult it is to find shelter beds for unhoused residents. What I've heard is 33 members of Camp Integrity at the Mahone Creek Path will be whittled down to 10 campers due to the 200 feet of space between each campsite that is proposed in this ordinance. How will the city decide who stays or who goes? And where will those ousted camp members go? Displacing more than two thirds of the campers is simply compounding the Displacing more than two-thirds of the campers is simply compounding the issue you are trying to address. In addition, half of the members at Camp Integrity are women, and some are victims of domestic violence. Keeping the distance of 200 feet between campsites will isolate women and place them at risk. I'd like to see the distance reduced because living outside is much safer in a group setting. You know, I thought that this ordinance might be a good step in the right direction, I still think it needs a lot of work. What I'm hearing is, police are going to be harassing people camping on public property. They're going to tag them, give them 72 hours, and then if they don't leave, they're going to, where they have nowhere else to go, they're going to go ahead and hijack their living essentials, leaving them with nothing. I don't understand how this is going to help, I think this needs a lot more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I think there's a gentleman here, yep, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Daniel Campbell, and I live at Margarita Drive, and I just want to thank you for your work, because you're addressing a taboo that concerns everybody, and I'm sure the hardest, or one of the hardest parts of your job is deciding who gets turned away, because obviously there's more people in need than there's resources. So my first question is, what is the criteria for those in receipt of these taxpayer-funded resources? Are we prioritizing people from this community, or can anyone from, effectively anywhere in the world, come into our community and receive these resources?
So what we'll do is, collect all the questions, and then we'll have them answered at the end, so keep going if you have other questions.
I have other questions.
Okay, so, so we're making note, go ahead.
Can you remind me, what was the total amount of these two state grants?
Yep, we will answer, so just keep, roll through the questions and we'll answer them all at the end.
And then, once we add up the number of, the total number that was awarded by the state, can we then divide that amount by how many people were in receipt of those funds, and then times that by how many people are currently at that encampment behind scraps?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Daniel. Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, come on down.
My name is Kenneth Hawk, I live on Bryn Mawr Drive, which is about a two-minute walk from here, and also, I apologize, I wasn't aware of the two-minute timeframe, but I have to say we'll surpass that if time permits. I'll start off by saying that I wish I didn't have to come, have to be here tonight, and I wish I was doing something else, like walking my dog or watching a little bit of TV before bed, but like many others here tonight, I'm here because we're concerned about the safety and well-being of ourselves and our children, as well as the quality of life in our neighborhood and the City of San Rafael as a whole. I'd like to read off a shortened edited version of an email that I sent to Chris Hess and Eli Hill, because it sums up my concerns and frustrations with the encampment behind our home. The encampment I'm referring to is the one in the public parking lot at Mission E Street. Going back about a year or so ago, one tent was pitched up and its occupant is still there. Several months back, another tent was pitched up. This one came along with garbage, as well as a more questionable person. And now, as of about four months ago, around the same time that Albert Park ban went into place, a few more tents were added. Accompanying one or both of them are a couple of rowdy people, whether it's them or the others, you can hear them talking loud, yelling at times, coughing, moaning, groaning, cursing each other and to themselves both day and night. Comes right through the walls of our home, there has been a few nights where my wife wasn't able to sleep because of shouting and all the racket they were making, yelling, moving things around, cans and bottles clanging. These encampments are practically in our backyard. The only thing that separates us and them is our old wooden fence. I've walked past with my dog a number of times, and there's trash everywhere, as well as a heavy smell of urine. I was even approached by one of them, and it was very unsettling. This person looked to be young, somewhat healthy, and could potentially be a contributing member of society, but is merely a delinquent. The situation is very upsetting, and it's disturbing just knowing the fact that they're behind our house, drinking, smoking, taking drugs, laying around littering and doing who knows what. On top of that, there's around three to six folks living and sleeping in their cars on any given night between the parking lot and the two blocks of E from the lot. Moreover, it's embarrassing, we no longer want to invite people over. We keep our bedroom curtains closed, because we do not wish to see the derelicts and their paraphernalia. We don't even want to open our bedroom windows now for air on a warm day, because we don't want to listen to the filth that comes out of their mouths. The homeless issue here in the downtown area has always been a problem, but it's becoming out of control.
Mr. Pack, if you could wrap up, thank you.
I'll try to read faster.
Yeah, no, and it's fine, actually, so we hear another reading, and so there's opportunity for you to actually email everything that you're saying to us.
I have, but I just would like to share with everyone here, as well as the audience, if time permits.
How about, 10 more seconds, 10 more seconds, because everyone else had the same constraint.
In summary, I ask that the ban that was put in place for Albert Park and Boyd Park be added to the parking lot that sits adjacent to the Fall Creek Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anyone else in the chambers? Who wants, okay, not seeing anyone, oh, come on down.
Knowing me, I guess I just want to say something is, my question is, what land is being provided like an alternative instead of camping, or staying where they're staying, is what options, other options are available? Not everybody wants to be inside, especially those who have been outside, it could drive them crazy maybe until, but I appreciate all you guys being here, I appreciate the people who try to do things, I like to try to get involved too. I'm on what committees I can be on when I can, but I just want to know what the alternatives are. I mean, it's kind of like behavior mod, if you're going to change your behavior, you have to have another behavior involved. I don't know much more what to say, but I'm a little disappointed that people who are experiencing this aren't here to hear their sides. I know there's different types of homeless, there's rudeness, there's people who care, there's people who want to be housed, there's people who want to work, and not having showers, not having certain things to be able to go apply for a job, keeps them back. I question who's who, and what are their problems? It's like, you can't walk in a person's shoes until you try it yourself, and, well, I forget the saying exactly, but I think you know where I'm going with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone in the chambers, we'll see if there are anyone online who'd like to comment.
Do you see a few hands raised?
I've got to find the button.
Big roast, smoked and baked?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
Too much.
Hello, hey. Hi there.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
We sure can, go ahead, please.
So, my concern, I've sent you all an email with a video about a woman's story out here, and specifically that there's a big danger with this proposed ordinance, and I recommend you watch the video and listen to her story, but for many people, especially women who are suffering from domestic violence, being in a camp is a matter of safety. So you have to have, and if you watch the video, the woman who has been terrorized for a long period of time, and she comes down here to Camp Integrity, people around her to keep her safe, and so the question becomes, okay, you've now forced everybody to be 200 feet from each other in nighttime, when they're sleeping, during a vulnerable time, and so you've now isolated people that may have, need to be around other people, and that you will be exposing them to dangers that they would not otherwise have faced. And the question for the City of San Rafael is that now that you've exposed them, exposed people, especially women, members of the LGBTQ community, you've exposed people that are vulnerable to these dangers, will the San Rafael accept liability when something goes wrong? Now that you've isolated people, will you accept liability for that? Will you take responsibility for your actions? And so that's my major concern, that this ordinance is going to majorly put a lot of people in unnecessary danger, and I think there's a better way. I think you should delay this, and you should continue to reach out to the community and look for a more sustainable.
Thank you, Robbie. Yes, go ahead, we can hear you.
Hi, my name's Ariana, I live in San Rafael, I work in Marin, I'm a frontline worker with my unhoused neighbors. I can't believe the stuff that's come out of you people's mouths. I do the footwork, I'm the foot soldier. I go in, and I'll have to wonder if people are going to be there or not. The fact that the state, instead of housing people, passes regulations and ordinances to say keep them away from state-funded buildings is disgusting, because those buildings are funded with the taxpayers' money, and them, right, they should shelter the people who are unhoused. I was unhoused for the first time ever last year, and they created a monster. Like, this is my courtesy, we're going to dance. The abuses I survived while I was homeless are unforgivable. Human rights violations, civil rights violations, reported them, and nobody did anything for me, and I'm highly educated, I have three degrees, I've been in the social services for 24 years, and I still survived horrible abuses while I was homeless. And this is the MO, absolutely not, and I'm telling you, I'm a frontline worker, I'm so glad I listened then, because when you said that you're going to send in your pigs to the camps, uh-uh, you're going to have to arrest me and a whole bunch of other people before you even get to them. You are creating an environment where your trigger-happy murderers are going to go in and start shooting randomly, or start randomly. You have to understand, like, this country is based on racism, you're going to create unnecessary murders, this is all disgusting, I'm a frontline worker, I will not let you harm them.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, John, you know, as I'm currently in Maui, but my sister was sick. I live in the Canal area in condominium, and I'm a privileged person, a white person. However, I spend a lot of time with people who are homeless, visiting with them, hanging out with them, and currently I've seen the homeless who have been creative, we have a person that's providing bikes under the expressway, we have others that have been creative entrepreneurs. The issue is, like people said, it's a matter of not isolating people from community, and women particularly, you need to have community. We're talking about even in Maui is Ohana and Aloha, a community of folks. Of course, the aim is to de-constrain these, you know, make it easier between people, and also, you know, of course you send to jail people that do methamphetamine or drug pushing, that's true, do that, but at the same time, don't deny community to people who are residents of Marin County, residents of San Rafael, they need to be accommodated just like anybody else, and we see them out among, in carts and in tents, I don't see that as a problem, I'm just seeing them like that, it's not a problem, it's just, we need to accommodate them with bathrooms and showers and food and other facilities, so that they can be sustained. Most of the people are different, people want to live outside, that's a possibility, and we need to have that as a possibility for people. And I think your heart's in the right place, this idea of decontaminating.
Thank you, John.
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can, go ahead.
Thanks, I'm sorry, I'm on my commute, so you're going to hear a lot of traffic noise. I just wanted to point out that the Marin IJ recently ran an article that indicates the increase in assessed property values in Marin County is 6.34% this year, last year it was 6.55. It's, you know, I mean, it's a negligible difference, property values are going up, and for the NIMBY homeowners who had complaints about the poor who are simply trying to survive another night on the street, I hope that they understand that those property values aren't high, they're not going up because the individual NIMBY homeowners are so talented and beautiful and charming, it's because there's scarcity, there's a scarcity issue. And so, it's paradoxical, because they're offended by the sight of these poor people, but it's, the poor people are symptomatic, the unhoused people are symptomatic of the very thing that is enriching them. So, you know, I read some of the correspondence, people demanding that people be shoved back under the freeway, I think we all know the liability that the county, that the county and the city took on because of that inhumane camp, and it really is shocking that there was no, you know, there was no ever county health inspection of that, it's shocking that you retained Lynn Murphy as a mental health liaison, given all her abuses, you've got to do better, you know, and I don't think it's a matter of benevolence that you're coming up with this ordinance, it's a matter of law, and it's a matter of what you already did in that camp, and you are.
Thank you.
Hello, I want to just, what fact that a lot of these problems that you have with the homeless are man-made, and as a matter of shuffling your problem to someone else's problem, like, for instance, the anchor routes that Sausalito had, it was, they solved it by getting rid of all the, you know, rinkety-dink boats that were polluting the bay, and then they went onshore, where they became a homeless encampment, and then later on, the Sausalito paid some of them, in which case they bought campers and moved to Novato and line some road, where, you know, that's the news nowadays. So in other words, you're going to be passing an ordinance to get rid of your problem, and you're basically going to pass it on to somebody else, so you're not studying as to who you're going to pass your problem on to. Are you going to pass it on to Novato, are you going to pass it on to Santa Rosa? You know, in other words, you know, why don't you have some kind of giant console as to all of you Bay Area or Marin cities get together and say, well, you know, you have so many homeless, we have so many homeless, if we get rid of our homeless, they're going to be shuffled off to someplace else, so they're going to have a problem, they're going to have an impact on their budget, so, you know, so that's not fair to them, so, and so everybody knows the, you know, the shuffle game that you're playing. So what is the ramifications to other cities? So, I mean, that is the part that is totally, you know, beneath you, you should really study the whole thing and invite everybody to contribute to what, the impact to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for you, Joe?
Excellent, thank you. I want to echo a lot of the sentiments made, but less about me and less angerly, and more in the interest of coming up with an actual solution. I think during the presentation, we heard there's an increase in people showing up at the camp, so more people losing their homes, more people losing their cars, we have a lack of vouchers, we have fewer landlords accepting Section 8, yet increasing housing costs. We have, here's one thing that's been overlooked, I think, increase in age of those being affected by homelessness, we have increase in, with that increases on resources, like healthcare systems. There's a lack of a standard for enforcement of this ordinance, it's confusing, it causes tension. ordinance. It's confusing. It causes tension and agitation with neighbors and campers because if both are non-compliant, if there's people closer than 200 feet, it sounds like both have to go. So instead of loving thy neighbor, they're gonna be pretty upset that they're close together. There's been an increase, I think the police can talk to you about this, in sexual assault of homeless campers. This is a very vulnerable population. I think sparsing them out and making it so there's no communities is very dangerous. I think council members should call actual caseworkers and speak to themselves and not rely on the filtered information from their staff. I think you can find that actually most caseworkers are in favor of encampments because it's centralized. They know where their clients are. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, good evening. My name is Heather Marie Co-Crom and I live in Montecito in San Rafael, California, but I have actually been a resident of the San Francisco Bay Area my entire life. I recently moved to San Rafael from San Francisco and I want to say that I've seen both fronts in both San Francisco and San Rafael and the homelessness. While I do have quite a bit of empathy, but a lot of the people that are living this way are mentally ill and they are refusing services. And so what I'd like to understand is that how do we deter more mentally ill or more homelessness to coming in San Rafael? And by no means, I want to help people, but I also don't want to enable as well. And I also don't want a beautiful, the city of San Rafael to turn into what's currently happening in downtown San Francisco. It's quite heartbreaking. I lived there for 15 years. I lived on Treasure Island for five years and lived on Outer Sunset for the last 10 years. And I have to say, it's not a city that I recognize. And I would really like to, you know, be more involved and try to prevent the things that have happened to San Francisco happen to San Rafael. So thank you for your time. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather.
Hi, there. I missed a little bit in the beginning, so I didn't hear you spoke about our water because I'm concerned about the Mahone Creek, but I'm concerned about any creek and any water. So if you could mention that in your rebuttal or whatever you're doing at the end, I would appreciate that. The other thing that I felt that apparently doesn't seem to be the consensus here is that I don't think that your buffers are big enough. So hopefully you'll make them bigger. And I also never heard you say that you're gonna keep people away from each other, so I don't know where that came from. Anyway, thank you for all your work you're doing and I much appreciate it.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment to raise their hand. I see no further public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. I know we've all been taking notes on the questions and I'll just quickly go through them and hopefully we've captured all of them. Ordinance, how does that relate to what's going on in other cities and towns? What would be our hope for impact on any crime data? That would be the calls for service. What is the legality or is it possible to add restrictions to residence, to residential houses? I think there's gonna be some legal education for all of us again on this one. And then there were a set of questions about the continuum of care and really the services that are provided of that. And who gets to benefit from the continuum of care? And probably, Chris, when you answer that, it's really Marin County-wide and maybe when you're answering what San Rafael-specific in Marin County, because we know we're part of a bigger continuum. And that was the dollar amount of our ERF grants. And then how many people did they help? And I think you talked about that. And then did it also help the people on the home path? And then a question was asked, what are alternatives for people? Again, this kind of gets back to when we're doing this, what are the other consequences that may occur? Two more, three more questions. Are there special provisions for women? There was some concern for that. Clarification of public utility, I think there was a confusion that it had to do with buildings, maybe go through that again. And finally, the waterway. And I'll just, you know, obviously summarize it from the public comment. In ultimate democracy, many people, some people wanted more regulations and some people wanted less. So definitely heard that loud and clear and appreciate you answering these questions and anything else that I missed.
Well, Mayor Kate, I think what we're gonna do is to divide and conquer this. I'm gonna address the legal questions. I think we're gonna then pass it on to Police Department to give you responses to some of the enforcement questions. And then Chris can wrap up with some of the other policy and spending questions. So I'm sitting here hearing everybody tonight and I think there's two things we can all agree on. First of all, the current status quo is not working. We all know that. And that the solution is very complex. And so as we embarked on this mission to take a look at our current ordinance and see what we could adjust to address some of the impacts and complaints that we are getting with regard to our current homelessness and camping in the city. The first thing we did was we explored what other cities and municipalities were doing. And it wasn't just local, but it was statewide and even looking in some of the other states as well. Because as you can imagine, every municipality, certainly in the Western United States, is dealing with this, these issues in some, one way or another, in some form. And as expected, there is a little bit of everything in every kind of ordinance. And I think the reason for that is because every jurisdiction is unique. And the current situations that we have, for example, with some of our growing encampments and its proximity to downtown and proximity to residents and some of the trash and sort of blight problems are perhaps different than some of our neighboring jurisdictions in Cordero, Madera and Larkspur, which is much smaller. They don't have sort of the larger civic areas that we do. They also don't have, to my knowledge, as many of the services that are provided as well so that many of the homeless individuals need to tap into to get the support that they need. So I will say, to answer the question kind of on benchmarking on neighbors, we really kind of our North Star on this was to really consider what are the problems we're trying to solve. And the two big ones were the growing complaints about the encampments and the sort of the concentrated problems that we see there with regard to, you know, criminal activities and the waste and the sanitation and hazards all sort of concentrated in that area and such that that neighboring community is bearing the largest impact, right, as compared with other areas of the city. And then also the excessive trash and personal property that's sort of discarded everywhere. So we really took elements of different ordinances that we reviewed and put something together that we thought was really going to be, at least at this point, work the best for City of San Rafael. And so that's how we did it. I can say that there's no other ordinance out there that we're doing a mirror image of or even anything that's that similar. We brought up Elk Grove. Elk Grove does have a similar law where they prohibit encampments, but Elk Grove is also very, very different than us. They don't have the large civic center than us and they don't have as many homeless individuals as well. And also, it's been untested for them. They haven't enforced it. So we are, I'd say, putting, as many municipalities are, we're in the front on this and trying something new and using the tools in our toolbox in order to address some of these problems. So the specific questions on residential housing, and I think specifically that came up in the context of Falkirk. Our intention is that this new ordinance should mitigate a lot of those impacts because what I heard is excessive trash, excessive noise, several individuals collecting together. And so what our recommendation would be is to adopt the current ordinance, which will limit the growth of any encampments in that area. And then we can institute our controls under the current ordinance to distance people away from each other, given that 200-foot distance. And then also enforce the new rules on keeping personal property and anything that an individual needs within their defined camping area. And so that should limit sort of the spreading out of an individual's space. So that would be what we'd recommend with the residential housing. I would not recommend at this point a ban on distance to all residential housing in the city. And the reason for that is because of the Martin B. Boise case, which does dictate that municipalities must have public spaces available for individuals who have no other alternative shelter available to them. And one of the first things that a court will look at when considering this new ordinance is whether it is in effect a total camping ban. And so when you add something as sweeping as that, where we have residential areas all over the city, the concern would be that a court would, it just wouldn't uphold constitutional scrutiny from a court. So that's why we're not recommending that measure at this time. There was a question about kind of who stays and who goes in the context of Mahone Path. There's currently 33, I think, tents there, and it would, under the new rules, be down to about 10 or so. Under the rules, the Police Department would not be determining sort of the first-in, sort of last-out kind of situation. If they determine that individuals are camping in violation of the ordinance, they would be able to use their discretion to enforce that. And it would be enforced on all individuals in that area who are out of compliance. So they wouldn't choose sort of certain individuals. Our hope is that we would be able to work with the individuals and space them apart in that area and so that, you know, we could get the compliance that way without such a heavy hand. And we certainly use these tools all the time. Whenever we're clearing encampments, we give 72 hours minimum, but usually a lot more, and try to work with the individuals to get them into, you know, an appropriate other place to go so that they're not sort of sent out on the streets without some alternative access to resources and other means available to them. The issue on domestic violence and safety, we thought about this because initially we were considering, when we were looking at spacing, whether it would be, you know, have one campsite and then have another distance and then only allow one campsite and then a certain minimum distance to the next. We specifically structured the ordinance to allow multiple campers together at one site for various reasons. One would be the reasons that many of the commenters brought up, which was domestic violence and safety. There could be families together, there could be friends, or it could be people that want to still camp in the same location for safety and other reasons. And so that's why we've built that allowance in so that multiple people could camp at one site together. And in that situation, the campsite is expanded to double the size. So instead of 10 by 10, it would be a 10 by 20 size for multiple people together. So I think that would address the many of the comments related to domestic violence and safety. Buildings and utility, I'm not sure if I understood that comment, what the question was, but I can just define more specifically. So for buildings such as City Hall and the other public facilities, camping is absolutely prohibited. Certainly, like, for example, inside City Hall. And then utilities, the new rule for that is that we're building in a 10-foot buffer from certain utility infrastructure. And the reason for that is our own need to access those facilities and as well as some enforcement for individuals who are tapping into some of the electrical and water resources. So that will just help our police officers with enforcement. The water and creek, so we don't have a rule proposed with any kind of minimum distance to water to creek. I will say that the new rules related to trash and limiting the amount of property and materials that somebody can discard outside their campsite should enable us to address some of those concerns, whether it's gonna be near a waterway or any other public area. And with that, I think I'm gonna pass it on to whoever's next.
Lieutenant Huber, thank you.
Hello again. So I wanted to speak to the enforcement portion of this and what we were hoping to see as a result of it. I would like to kind of take you back to the Albert Park encampment that we were dealing with months ago. And what we saw with that encampment is as the size of the encampment increased, so did the number of calls for service, so did the law, the negative impacts to the surrounding community, to the rec center and to the daycare center as a result of that increase. I believe there was about 25 people at the end of that encampment. There are now 33 on the Mahone Path. I know there was some reference made to Camp Integrity and connection to Albert Park. So what we're seeing with Camp Integrity is a similar situation where we're getting a lot of more reports of negative impacts to the surrounding community. We have reports and documented arrests for drug trafficking. We've had reports of open drug use. We've had reports from surrounding businesses of vandalism and theft. So what we're hoping to do is to try to limit those negative interactions to that area. And by dispersing the population into smaller groups, we're hoping that the negative interactions between that group will also decrease so we can have a positive impact in that respect as well.
Actually, before you go, can you just maybe speak, I think maybe you did, but what we saw before when we have put in ordinances in terms of calls for service and just kind of reiterate that, that they've decreased?
At the Albert Park encampment, yes, we were seeing, we saw a spike in the number of drug-related activity, spike in overdoses, a spike in conflicts between individuals, whether they were with individuals that were trying to take advantage of the services at the rec center, or there were interactions between the people occupying the encampment themselves. So as soon as we were able to resolve that situation, our calls for service at Albert Park and the surrounding recreational centers went way down.
Yeah, thank you. Director Hess.
Okay, I want to start with the question about the continuum of care benefits and how we decide who benefits from that. I would say that the main thing that the community should know is that folks that are interested in obtaining case management benefits and housing benefits all have to go through an assessment. We call it the VI SPADA. It's an acronym. Don't tell me what it stands for. I just know that acronym at this point, it's become a kind of commonplace for us. But the point is that professionals will assess each individual for their vulnerability. And vulnerability consists of illnesses, age, status as a survivor of domestic violence, and many other questions. They will give them a score based on that vulnerability. And the first people housed are the ones with the highest score. In other words, the ones with the most conditions that might lead to their complications or death on the streets. It's a system that's served us well for a while. I think it, you know, I think it addresses a lot of the moral imperatives as best as we can. And people have to do the assessment in order to obtain those benefits. And so that's where we oftentimes are missing. And so that's where we oftentimes are missing people. And we're working, the case management system is working hard to try and convince them to trust it enough to do the assessment and start moving forward that way. Additionally, we really, all of our services are very housing-focused. And what I mean with that is that when we're serving folks on the street, we are always thinking about where they are on a path to housing because there's many steps involved, unfortunately. It's a dealing with the bureaucratic system and people have a lot of issues going on that may need to be resolved. We think about where they're at on their path to housing and how they're moving along. For example, shelter space is time-limited in the city. However, with folks with a lot of different issues who are on a path to housing and making progress with the case manager, those time limits become a little bit extended in order to invest in them enough to get them beyond homelessness. So next was a question about the dollars in the ERF grant. We have had two grants that we were fortunate to receive. One was $522,000. And that one is currently in place. It funds a, an extremely talented case manager from St. Vincent de Paul who has been working with, with our folks on the streets now since, I believe he started about the same day that I did actually in this job in January. But we're seeing really good results with, with his work and we're very, very pleased with it. So that grant will probably run us through most of this calendar year. And then we will decide where do we want to go with that program with our second grant that was recently awarded, which is $250,000. I think that one of the things that that question got at was about how much we spend per person. And I'll say that with case management, $10,000 per client per year is pretty realistic. There is staffing costs that are the vast majority of that. And then there are a lot of funds that are required for just solving, solving problems with, with the person. As you know, it can be very expensive to get into housing. Sometimes you need to come up with two or three months' worth of rent. And our case management programs need to be able to be ready with that type of resource. So it's a heavy amount of, of cash. So we, and we've been fortunate with the state ERF money that they are very flexible with us and willing to do whatever it takes to help end a person's homelessness, which I've really appreciated working with CalICH, Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness on these grants. The final question, how many have been helped by that? We are currently cohort, case-managing a cohort of 17. There were services from that program that went into all of the different participants of the service support area, the SSA. And that was a group of 47. But not all of them got case management, they may have got other types of support. The next question that I saw was about discussing domestic violence and encampments and the vulnerability of women and folks, LGBT folks, really all intimate partner violence. I do appreciate in many ways where the question is coming from because it's a key driver of homelessness. It's one of the most, one of the biggest things is that individuals experiencing homelessness may be victimized. And that is something that we definitely have to work with. We have to keep our systems very trauma-informed because many of our, our folks have been through really terrible violence. I think that the ordinance in this case is allowing individuals to camp together, to work together on that for any manner of, of reasons involving safety or other social networks. But I do want to say in regards to the issue of intimate partner violence, that it's really important that everyone report that violence. There's assistance in reporting that violence from Community Violence Solutions that will participate in the reporting for any individual that doesn't feel comfortable reporting to the police alone. But for individuals that do report intimate partner violence to the police, there is an organization we have called the Center for Domestic Peace that has a private and secret shelter location that they offer in these situations. It does require individuals to report. Additionally, I would offer that there is a national domestic violence hotline and that that is also staffed 24/7 and helps to provide people the linkage they need to local resources and hopefully not become homeless as a result of intimate partner violence or have a place to go if they do find themselves homeless. So if there's any other questions for me, I'm happy to do it, those are the ones that I wrote down.
Thank you. Now, you all did an excellent job of answering the many questions and it's very many, multifaceted and nuanced. So, so thank you for providing all that information. I'll bring it back to the council for final comments. And I will start with Councilmember Kurtz.
Sure, couple of final comments. And I'll, I'll just go ahead and read some of my notes. But I think the, the jux of it is, this isn't the end-all solution. And, and I think we're going to need to still do some more work. So I really wish we were here tonight to improve interim shelter or increase case management services or more housing because we know that that's the way we're going to really have a big impact on the homelessness community. But tonight, we're here to address an immediate Centerfell community safety need and concern. As was stated, homelessness is a national and systemic problem. Centerfell, as well as most of Marin communities, are working to serve our homeless community. Even those communities who don't believe that they have homelessness, they do have homelessness, and we know that from the point in time counts. As our housing inventory tightens and the cost of living increases, we're also anticipating that our homeless population's going to also increase, we know that. We have the visible homeless, probably those with the highest level of need, but there's also a growing percentage of homelessness that are non-visible. And those are the working homeless. I stay committed to serving on, for, supporting our whole homeless community as well as the non-homeless community, of course. Every homeless individual has a different story and different needs. And before jumping to conclusions about the circumstances of somebody who's homeless, I hope you take the time to actually introduce yourself, ask them their name, and maybe have their, you know, learn a little bit about their story. Because everyone has a different story. And I've spent quite a bit of time within our homeless community. Capacity limits are not new, we know that. They're based on safety concerns. We have capacity limits at restaurants, at movie theaters. The number of people in the car can only be how many seat belts you have. And as a mom of now older kids, but younger kids at the time, there was a point of no return when there were too many kids in the house, right? You just could not get control. That's where we're at right now. So we need to be realistic about the situation, but also flexible enough to develop supports to ensure the safety and security of all the residents of the community, including the homeless, is needed. The ordinance will provide official guidelines and direction and will allow us to gain a bit more control of a community space. I hope these limits reduce our instances of crime and improve the considerations along the path. But we need to be careful, to carefully monitor. And I guess that's where my questions come in. How will we know that this is working? And when do we need to bring it back and say it wasn't the intended, what we are looking for? We have unintended consequences. Because we may be asking too much of our homeless community and we also may be asking too much of our police department.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all staff who came before us tonight to describe what the proposed ordinance would be. I think it's important to bear some of the presentation that was shared about what are we doing beyond this ordinance? This, this ordinance is not the end. I think Councilmember Kurtz stated that already and I'll say it again. This is not the, the end of what we're doing, this is an intermediate step. I think the more important things that we are doing are to approve more capability around permanent supportive housing, interim housing, plus supportive services. We cannot, I think it's been invoked a few times by public commenters about we, we are not going to shuffle folks around. These are folks that live in our community. However, I think that this ordinance does address immediate issues of folks who are experiencing homelessness, who do not have the ability to move somewhere else. In a, in a personal way, my experience with homelessness is through my father, who spent a period of his life unable to be housed due to things that happened that were not within his control as a younger person. I share this with vulnerability because I want folks to understand that I know that the condition of being homeless is not something that people choose. There are conditions that arise in folks' lives that, that create a journey for them that ultimately is not something that folks want. I am interested in mitigating or eliminating those journeys into homelessness and accelerating the journeys out. I appreciated Director Hess, how you talked about how we can find our steps out of them. How do we make sure that those happen more easily? I think in the past, without being specific, those journeys have been very difficult, very difficult, even for, for, for someone to get through what it would take to get into places of capability to, to be employed. To even, even permanent supportive housing cases do require folks to become employed, gain credit. There's a series of things that are, that are very difficult to come out of conditions where a lot of tragedy might have hit. All this is to say, those are the things that I think are most important, that we are considering in ordinance tonight. Just tells me that we are in a state of, of a liminal space before we can get to that place where we can eliminate homelessness. So I'm looking forward to that day. But in the meantime, you know, I look forward to making certain that this ordinance actually works for all stakeholders, not just the community, but also folks experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
This is often the case, my perspective on this is a bit historic. I was on the city council when we spent the money to build Mahone Creek Path. And it was, you know, like a million dollars of city money. And it was a big stinking deal for us to do that. And the, the objective was to give students going to Davidson Middle School a way to get to school and to provide an amenity to the public along the creek. To see that public investment turned into a place where our police department goes and arrests drug dealers is, is very disheartening. And that is not what, what our, our community wants. We've heard it very clearly from our businesses and our residents that the unfortunate people experiencing homelessness and needing treatment and help, needing to be positively responsive to the case management to avail themselves of the, of the resources available. The best path forward for us is this ordinance that will restore some level of public utility to that, to that area as well as provide, hopefully, the needed encouragement to the people there to get into the programs that can help them get back on their feet. So for that reason, I support this ordinance. And I think we should move forward with it, knowing full well, as my colleagues have said, it's not the ultimate answer, but right now, it's the best answer to bring balance onto our community.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And as I've already said during public comment, and not just tonight, also the emails that we get this week and probably every week. For some folks, this ordinance goes way too far and for others, it doesn't go far enough. But I think we all agree that having unhoused folks in our community isn't good for anyone. It's not good for the individual who's living on our streets and it's not good for the surrounding impact on our community. And I can tell you that the council and obviously the staff and their great work and presentation, we're all really invested on working on the underlying solutions. The solution to homelessness is housing and wraparound services or case management. And Centerfell's continued to invest in both of those areas. And I was jotting down a list because we can always do more, but we've already shown our commitment to reducing homelessness in our community. We have 3301 Kerner, we have Homeward Bound, Jonathan's Place, we have Ritter Center, we have Bivilon, we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that enables units, all types of housing to be built. We have shown that that is an important part and a representation of the values that we have here in Centerfell. The other part is case management. And the questions we were asking earlier, the SAFE team, which is a non, it's a non-officer, non-police-uniformed officer who shows up, a trauma-informed specialist. This is an area that, a jurisdiction of our size, I think, I know we're the only one in Marin County who's invested those dollars because we know that the folks on our streets are in crisis and we need the right kind of response for them. We're proud that we've been able to make the commitment to, to those folks. In addition, Downtown Streets Team, we just doubled the contract. That was in the IJ, you can read that article, I think it was a couple of days ago. Lynn Murphy, we have someone embedded with the police officer who's a trained psychologist. And she is building those relationships so we can get folks onto the path of housing. And of course, the case management dollars that Director Hess talked about and, and the incredible results that have happened because folks are actually in relationship and getting housed. So those are the solutions and those are really the bigger pictures. And it's not just about this ordinance, it's this layering on with all the other actions we're doing. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we do not do this alone. You're hearing Centerfell, Centerfell because we're within our chambers. Marin County's Health and Human Services, they're the ones tasked. They're the overarching agency that gets federal and state dollars for the majority of this work. That one department is actually bigger than all of the departments in Centerfell and their budget is bigger than all of our budget. So we lean heavily on our community partners, our county partners. And thank you to Director Hess for going in the, in the meetings and really building those relationships because they're really the muscle for all of this. And of course, our nonprofits, we hold them accountable. We work with them, we don't just give them contracts and say, "Good luck." We actually circle back and we say, "What are the results that we're having?" And, and we are getting those results because we are asking for that type of accountability. So I'll just close by saying, this is not an easy answer solution. If I had a nickel for every time someone said, "If you just did this, then this would happen." And homelessness is a complex, nuanced issue. And so we're layering lots of different solutions together. And Centerfell, no different than many municipalities across the United States. And what I appreciate about this ordinance is we're looking at and exploring a tool that will work here in Centerfell for our situation. We didn't just pick up a daytime ban that Portland, Oregon instituted last week. That is not appropriate for our community here and now. So I really, I'll just circle back and say, really appreciate the legal team. I appreciate Chris Hess and his team. Appreciate SRPD, who is the backstop every single day. When people are in crisis, who do they call? They call our police officers and they show up with professionalism day after day. So I do believe this would be another tool in our tool belt. We don't have very many and I know we'll use them judiciously. So I have heard, I think, general support. So with that, I would entertain a motion on this item.
And Mayor, if I could just interrupt before you do that?
Yes, please.
I would like the recommended edit that was in our slide presentation. It's not a substantive edit to the ordinance, it's adding a conflict provision. It's, would be read as a new section 19.50.050, conflict with other regulations. And it would read as follows, "To the extent that there is any conflict with any other provisions of this code, the standards and regulations of this chapter shall prevail." So my recommendation is to introduce the ordinance with this edit.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, is that sufficient with the deputy city attorney reading that in?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could read the title, would you like me to read the title of the ordinance first?
Sure.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Centerfell adding chapter 19.50 to the Centerfell municipal code entitled Camping on Public Property, to regulate camping on public property within the city of Centerfell.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amended resolution, ordinance and waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. Thank you all, this meeting's adjourned.